And for the next item, we have a Destination 2025 Life Ready Learning Experiences Overview for you, and Dr. Grant will come forward to get us started.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Cashwell. Today, we would like to give you an update on the Division's effort toward providing students with life-ready learning experiences, which is a component of our Destination 2025. Dr. Thomas Farrell, Director of High Schools, and Mac Baton, Director of Career and Workforce Development, are here to give you an update. Dr. Farrell?
Our update today will focus on two goals of the strategic plan: achieving academic excellence and leveraging our strength of diversity. Upon students' graduation, our goal is to ensure that every student has a plan in place for further education, employment, or military enlistment. Each spring, our senior students complete a senior survey, which collects information regarding the student's post-graduation intentions. Students complete this survey electronically through Major Clarity, which is HCPS's student-centered online platform designed to facilitate college and career readiness. For the 2023 graduating class, 77% of students reported plans to continue education through a four-year or two-year college, or they have other educational plans. 14% aim to seek employment opportunities, and 2% were joining the military. In comparison to 2019, we are seeing a slightly smaller percentage of graduates pursuing post-secondary education, and a larger percentage of students seeking employment after high school. This data highlights the diversity of student goals after leaving HCPS and provides direction for the School Division on the learning opportunities needed to help students be successful. An objective of our strategic goal to achieve academic excellence is to provide students with opportunities to engage in rigorous learning experiences. Specifically, at the high school level, students have opportunities for advanced coursework, including enrollment in honors, IB, advanced placement, and dual enrollment courses that prepare them for post-secondary education. Additionally, workforce and career development course offerings are designed to contribute to the broad educational achievement of students, including the development of academic, technical, and work readiness skills. Our schools and partnerships support students and teachers in a variety of ways. We prioritize continuous professional learning for educators to ensure they are well-prepared to deliver challenging content effectively. Operating as a collaborative team, we place a strong emphasis on effective communication to ensure that students and their families fully comprehend the opportunities available in rigorous courses. Our dedication to student success extends to providing comprehensive support encompassing both academic and emotional assistance for those taking on challenging coursework. We understand the importance of executive functioning skills for student success and are working to actively integrate these skills into our classes, equip students for academic independence. Furthermore, we foster a growth mindset, firmly believing that with the proper support, all students can excel in rigorous courses, promoting resilience and determination. By leveraging strategic partnerships with organizations such as the College Board, Equal Opportunity Schools, and J. Sergeant Reynolds, we have expanded dual enrollment and AP offerings, creating diverse pathways for students to access advanced coursework. Our ultimate commitment is to equip students with the knowledge and skills required not only to thrive in demanding academic environments, but also to establish a solid foundation for future success. Over the past five years, opportunities for students to participate in advanced courses have continued to increase. Since 2018, 2019, we have seen steady growth in the number of AP and dual enrollment course sections throughout the Division. The number of AP sections has increased 29%. Through the elimination of fees associated with dual enrollment courses and by working with high schools to identify teachers with the credentials to teach dual enrollment courses, the number of sections has increased by 39%. AP courses are offered at all nine high schools, as well as the Henrico Virtual Academy, and dual enrollment courses are offered in five of the nine high schools, as well as the A Within the framework of Destination 2025, one of our key objectives is to ensure equitable enrollment in advanced courses. This slide demonstrates our progress in advanced coursework enrollment from the inception of our strategic plan in 2018, 2019, to 2022, 2023, focusing on data from each year's graduating class. Our ultimate goal is to guarantee that all graduating students have had the opportunity to access and enroll in advanced high school coursework. To analyze this data with respect to different student groups, we employ an equity index formula. This formula helps us to identify groups that may be under or overrepresented. An index score below 1 signifies underrepresentation, while a score above 1 indicates overrepresentation. When comparing the two years, it's evident that students with disabilities and English learners still face underrepresentation, although there have been improvements. Notably, there is more equitable representation among Black, Hispanic, students with disabilities, English learners, and economically disadvantaged students. At this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Mr. Baton.
Thank you, Dr. Farrell. Good afternoon. Life Ready Learning begins early in elementary school, introducing students to Virginia's 17 career clusters. We guide students through a natural progression of career awareness, exploration, and preparation. In the early stages, career awareness exposes students to a variety of jobs. Middle school brings career exploration, where they plan their future, and high school focuses on career preparation for the chosen career. Work-based learning experiences enhance students' skills, aligning with the six Cs of our Henrico learner profile valued by employers. These experiences, from job shadowing to internships, provide real-world connections to coursework and boost employability. Our graphic shows low-intensity life-ready experiences in green and blue, while high-intensity, high-quality work-based learning experiences are in orange. Students can build upon low-intensity experiences using tools like Major Clarity for career research in grades four through eight. As they chart their academic career plan, they can participate in job shadowing and onsite tours in grades nine and 10, and engage in high-intensity experiences for career preparations in grades 11 and 12. High-quality work-based learning experiences enable students to apply classroom instruction in a real-world, business-or-service-oriented work environment. According to VDOE, work-based learning experiences must meet three criteria to be approved as high-quality. They must be related to a student's career goals and/or interests, be integrated with instructions, and performed in partnership with local businesses and organizations. Each high-quality work-based learning experience is further defined and must have a minimum duration in order to meet the graduation requirement. We're excited to share that for the 2022-23 school year, we reported 2,038 high-quality work-based learning experiences to VDOE. This number is expected to grow as we refine our tracking processes and allocate additional staff resources to provide more students with valuable experiences in the comprehensive high schools. To expand these opportunities to a larger student base, this year, we've introduced service learning experiences in all collaborative college prep and honors government classes. Service learning bridges classroom learning with real-world community experiences. Students participating in these experiences become more deeply involved with their local community, acquiring practical skills, nurturing their career and personal interests, and often helping them becoming more engaged citizens. High-quality work-based learning experiences are instrumental in preparing students for life by assisting them in making informed career decisions, connecting them with potential employers, and honing those essential skills needed for future employment.
At this time, Dr. Farrell, Mac Baton, and I will answer any questions you might have.
Thanks so much, Dr. Grant, Mr. Baton, Dr. Farrell. Board members, let's see, Mrs. Shea, questions, comments?
Thank you so much. Thank you for y'all's work in this space. I know this is somewhere where we're growing these opportunities for students, and that comes with challenges and finding partnerships and that sort of thing. So thank you for your continued work in this space. I'm delighted to see a greater variety of students engaging in a greater variety of advanced coursework. As we look at these numbers, as a board member, any way I can help support the elimination of barriers to help qualify teachers for dual enrollment, whether that be advocacy or anywhere, you know, I stand ready, and I think some of my other fellow board members stand ready to help Dr. Cashwell and you all figure out how to increase the dual enrollment opportunities for our students, as we talked about in the legislative agenda and other places. Just one question for you. Looking at the pie charts of our students self-reporting out of what their plans are after high school, I see the none or no response going from 6% and increasing to 7%. Do we have a feeling if that is an increase in no response or increase in no plans, or do we not know?
We're not totally sure. I believe it's no response. I believe these students that are indicated here with the 7% have not completed the survey.
Okay, thank you. I know that's hard, seniors, their last week or two of high school. Getting them to do anything is kind of like pulling teeth, so getting them to self-report out can be challenging. But I just didn't know if we had a feeling on that, so I appreciate that. And that's all for me.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Mrs. Ogbonna?
Just a couple things that jumped out at me was that the opportunity and growth mindset, the use of those words over and over again, because that's what it's all about. It's all about growth. But when I look at the slide that has, Mac, if you don't mind taking it to the slide with all the, there we go, with your whole long list, the next one, keep going, that one. When I look at this and I see apprenticeships, internships, externships, these are all, you know, and the job shadow, real-life experiences where a kid gets a chance to try something out. And as we have all said before, I think that is such a valuable time, that the kids get a chance to see if something works for them and if it doesn't. And that doesn't work is also just as important as it does, because it helps them fine-tune and focus on what they are interested in. But the next slide, that is an amazing number, and I'm curious, this one, how does that compare with the past, Mac? I mean, are we, obviously, that's a 2,000-plus is a huge number of opportunities for our kids, but how are we doing in the past and what's the trajectory? I'm curious.
We are definitely going up. In the past, we primarily focused on A-Center students. Now we're broadening that lens and looking at it from a K-12 perspective, but for all students, and making sure all students have that same option to try something and find out, hey, this is not what I thought it was, or what I was hoping it would be. So I think you're going to see this number continue to grow as we continue to fine-tune the opportunities and work that into our student's schedule, so they have the opportunity to see this as a valuable tool for them in their career preparation.
Well, and, you know, we've talked about this before. We've had parents reach out and say how appreciative they are later on when their kids are in college. They were able to eliminate some things, and it actually helps them graduate in four years, not extend, not change, you know, majors, things like that. So to me, this is just an amazing list of opportunities for our kids. So I do hope we keep growing it. It's something I wish I'd had that opportunity for when I was growing up. But, I mean, so anyway, I appreciate all the hard work in the area, just like Marcy said, it is continued good work on y'all's part. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ogbonna, Ms. Atkins.
Good afternoon. This was well done. I'm interested if we could go to the slide, I believe it had the pie chart. Specifically wanted to dive into the military data and what we're seeing here, and would love to know more about what we're doing to boost our efforts around military and making sure that we are sharing the opportunity, not only to participate, but hands-on, what do students or what other students that participated, what were their experiences? Because it is becoming a bit shocking, because after 2%, you're 1%. Does the program dissolve? So I'm interested in learning what we're doing to boost efforts. What are you hearing from students regarding their interest in the military? Because we can't decline much more without dissolving it, and then there's no opportunity. So I'd love to learn more.
Sure. So I don't have specifics on what students are saying. That's information we could gather from the schools. But in terms of all of our high school programs, they bring in representation from the military to recruit students throughout the school year, facilitated through school counseling. So our students have access to military recruiters pretty much throughout the entire school year. And when we have our college and career fairs, there's representation from the military in that regard. I can't say for certain if we've brought students who graduated, who are now in the military, back to schools. That's something that we can look at with our high schools to see if there's some opportunities there. But we do try to expose our students to military recruiters in the same way that we expose them to colleges and universities, and also various job opportunities.
Thank you for sharing that. So I happen to have run into a few that are in the military that were exposed through JROTC. And I think one of the better ways for students to truly understand what JRTC is and what it means to enlist is to bring some folks that graduated from Henrico County Public Schools to chat, just as we do with our nursing program. They get to talk to nurses already in the field. I think our students would benefit from our folks in service to ask questions and so forth and so on. The other question is, there's a certain number, and I don't know specifics, so maybe you can help me here, but I'm aware there is a certain number that the School Division has to meet in order for the program to remain. Can you give me some insight into that?
Yes, ma'am. The contracts are basically written, it's 10% of the student enrollment or 100 students for the students, and if not, then the programs are put on probation. I would like to add to that piece of the puzzle, something that we are implementing as we move forward, and it was in place prior to COVID, but it kind of went away. Some of you may remember, there was a group called Blue Star Mothers that celebrated the students that went into the military after high school. That went away during COVID. We're actually planning on bringing that back this year, because that has kind of the same impact as Signing Day does for students going to the world of work. It brings attention to the great opportunities that the military brings to the table for these students who choose to choose that pathway as their career goals.
Thank you for sharing that, because that program, I believe, and you can keep me honest later, one of the things that the parents and guardians and families enjoyed was getting their college paid. It is another avenue financially, because not every child is a straight A. And then we have service-oriented children that just want to work, and they just want our gift service, and they want to share their gifts in that space of helping our country. So I'm very pleased to hear that we are bringing that back. I would like to learn how we're bringing that back, and if needed, I can share some of those stories as well. Are we currently on probation? Because I'm looking at 2%.
And I just wanted to point out, for additional clarity here, this is not enrollment in JROTC. These are students who report they're going into the military once they leave us. So many students who are enrolled in JROTC get great benefits from the program, but may not choose to then enlist in the military. They may be going to college or right into the workforce in another profession. So I just wanted a point of clarity. So I understand your concern based on the data. This is not reflective of our JROTC enrollment. This is students leaving us going post-secondary.
So can you also answer if we're on probation or not?
You could speak to the programs, and I can provide you a list by school of JROTC.
It's important to know, because if we are on probation, I certainly would want to make sure that we're doing all we can before it dissolves.
Absolutely.
So I appreciate that. I think Slide 7, talking about executive functioning skills, so similarly those abilities to handle goal setting and time management and all of those things. I'd love to learn and dive deeper into understanding how we are helping our staff and our teachers in the space of students with differences, learning differences, developmental differences. What are we doing to help staff in that space on executive functioning skills? And I love that you have that bullet there and that you phrased it that way, so that we can really dive deeper and learn what that means.
Right. So it starts with professional learning. When we talk about, you know, students with disabilities, for example, our Exceptional Education Department provides professional learning to teachers throughout the course of the school year, not just on instruction, but making sure that we are providing those students with what they need to be successful in our most rigorous courses. And in terms of the executive functioning skills, it really boils down to, you know, us starting in ninth grade with recognizing, you know, where students may have some challenges, whether it's time management, you know, note-taking, study habits. And we incorporate those things into our classes, because those are some of the things that we've identified as skills necessary for students to be successful in our most rigorous courses. So professional learning, district level, professional learning at the school level, and also working with individual students in terms of what their needs are. Over the last few years, we've really done an excellent job of working with individual students and meeting their specific needs. So that's something I'm very proud of.
As you should be. And I guess this is a two-part. So when we're thinking about the hands-on part, which is also, of course, tied to that goal-setting and time-management pieces, how are we memorializing it in that particular space to share with families? So families, of course, get their grades, they get updates from teachers, but how are we informing them on that specific area of that executive functioning skill? Here are some of the ways that your child is goal-setting, so that at home, they're able to complement it. How are we doing that?
Right. I think there's some room for growth in that area on a high school level. So that's something that we can definitely talk about doing more of.
Thank you all so much. I did have one more. I also, I like the message, I think, let me see what slide this is, might be Slide 14, Own Your Journey. It's on one of these slides here, and, you know, I think it really encourages individuals to be proactive. It's also a call for self-empowerment and accountability. And one thing to consider, that little teeny tagline of Own Your Journey is something that we might want to consider putting on other materials as we transition and become more aggressive academically. It's a very short way to get our children empowered, to be held accountable, because you're going to own where you're going and your path, and I think it fits well here. So from a marketing perspective, I think that tagline might work well in other spaces. So thank you so much, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Reverend Cooper?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have two quick questions. So on Slide 7, the Equity Index Advanced Coursework, I want to commend you all, commend us, Dr. Cashwell, because there has been marked improvements in moving the needle in our five of our underrepresented groups, Black, Hispanic, students with disabilities, English learners, and economically disadvantaged. Although there's still much work to be done to help move the needle further for all these groups, I want to applaud Dr. Cashwell, as well as you all, for, first of all, recognizing disparities exist, implementing recommendations from our Board, and providing an update regarding the data. Now, my question is, could you share with us an example of the specific interventions that have been put in place to improve access for our underrepresented students in advanced courses?
Sure. So it starts with, you know, making sure that we have opportunities by offering the courses. Our schools do a great job with our school counselors, teachers, and also administrators, again, in working with individual students, making sure that if they have the potential, we identify them for those rigorous course opportunities. We talk to students individually, we talk to families individually to, you know, share the opportunities and the benefits of taking those rigorous courses. And we've also put some structures in place to support students who are willing to take a chance if they've not taken an advanced course. We work collaboratively to ensure that if a student does need success, we kind of take them through our intervention process. So it's not just, you know, students who are not meeting the mark in, you know, college prep classes, but we take the same approach with students who are not meeting the mark in advanced courses, because we want them to be successful. So one, it starts with communication and making sure that there's an awareness about the courses that exist at each of our high schools. And then, you know, we spend time specifically with parents and students to, you know, provide further education on the types of courses that their students may be taking, and while we feel the course is a good fit. And once they're into classes, our teachers work collaboratively with our counselors and administrators to establish plans for success for each individual student.
So I appreciate that, because what it speaks to speaks to the individuality of our students and the specificity of their needs. So thank you for that. Second question is, since the slide combines all of our advanced coursework and isn't broken down by honors, AP, IB, and dual enrollment, could you share with us in which areas we may have seen the most improvement and in which areas we still have significant opportunities to make improvement?
So I would say we've seen a tremendous amount of growth in our AP and also dual enrollment. We have room for growth with dual enrollment in terms of, you know, expanding opportunities for students of all of our non-comprehensive high schools to be able to take those courses. And we're doing some work there to identify teachers who have the credentials and those who are close, and providing support to them to ensure that, you know, from a financial standpoint, they can take those required courses to be able to teach those classes in our high schools.
Well, I'm glad you did that, because that segues into my last kind of question, because I received many questions from constituents asking about expansion of the dual enrollment program for the High Tech Academy at the A-Center at Highland Springs, to other schools in the Division. The reason being, in terms of equity, many have graduated from this program, have shared with me the cost savings they've experienced as a student, as a parent and guardian, as it relates to the rising cost of higher education as we know. And so for our families with limited means this is a game changer. So the fact that we are cognizant of that and we're conscious in our challenge to, you know, have teachers for this program. So if we get more teachers, how is our scalability of increasing these opportunities?
Pretty good. If we can get more teachers to meet the requirements, absolutely, and that's our goal. Every year, we're working with our high schools to identify those teachers, again, who either have the credentials or who are very close, and we are, you know, making sure that they have what they need in order to teach those courses. I'm happy to say that as of today, we have another high school coming on board with offering dual enrollment next year, and possibly another. So it is a goal of ours to have dual enrollment in every single high school.
I was recently with a group of people and a young lady at my church. I was blessed to go to two graduations within a week's timeframe. She graduated from Highland Springs with her associate's degree from Reynolds. I was at that graduation, as well as Highland Springs, and she's now a sophomore to women, Mary, right? A junior, actually, rather. So she's two years in, fresh out of high school, and it was a moment of pride, because she represents what this program represents. And so, I mean, for me, and I echo what Ms. Shea said in regards to the resources that we are putting in place to assist our teachers and get in there. So anything we can do, you know, and more, to increase opportunities and capacity is just imperative. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Reverend Cooper. I really would like to just tag on to what Reverend Cooper just said, because what I wrote down was five of our nine high schools have it. That means four of our high schools don't. And then which high schools are coming online next year, Dr. Farrell? Because it troubles me, it does trouble me that not all nine, anytime I hear that we don't have it across Henrico schools, it does trouble me.
Well, I do want to make one point. All students have access to apply to our academies where they can be fully duly enrolled, and as Reverend Cooper pointed out, graduate with an associate's degree. But we want to make sure that perhaps students don't want But we want to make sure that perhaps students don't want the full dual enrollment package, they want to be able to take individual courses. That's what we're talking about. So this would mean individual dual enrollment courses at every high school. No, I mean, we hear you, and that is why we have been ramping up that effort. So there are ways to take advantage of dual enrollment outside of your comprehensive high school, but we want to make sure, for all students, but we want to make sure that it's available.
You would either have to be in one of our centers or in CTE to do so, right, to be dual-enrolled?
Fully, no, not if you want individual courses. That's the associate's degree program.
But if you want individual courses, you cannot currently access that type of dual enrollment across Henrico County Public Schools, high schools, correct?
Currently, because, again, the requirements to teach dual enrollment are not the same as teaching other courses. So that's what it really boils down to, as we identify teachers who are close and who would like to, you know, take the few classes that they need in order to be fully certified to teach dual enrollment, we'll work with them to ensure that they can, you know, take those classes. So we would love to see dual enrollment courses at every high school, and we're working to get there.
And just to let you know, teachers must have a master's degree plus 18 credit hours in order to teach dual enrollment.
Thank you for saying that again on the record. No, I mean, we all agree, it's a legislative priority, but just when you hear, when you hear that as a board member, for anybody listening, we're working toward it.
Well, and I would say similarly with AP courses, right? So sometimes it's interest-based, sometimes it's, you know, when it comes to, and sort of looking back to the beginning of our work towards the Strategic Plan Destination 2025 and mapping out what are the barriers to making sure more students have opportunities to be in advanced courses, whether they be honors, AP, IB, dual enrollment, is this idea that if it's not available to you in your comprehensive high school setting, that is a barrier in and of itself? And so while there are other barriers, we've been swiftly removing that, spreading that access, so there are options. And it may be a student chooses, you know, an AP course instead of a dual enrollment course, but we want to make sure that there are options for students.
And then can someone speak to me a little bit more about Slide 7, the six, let me see, I think it's Slide 7, with the service-based learning experiences? No, not Slide 7. 10. The service learning, 505, we added that. When did we add service, service learning?
Excuse me, when did we add it?
When did we add that?
That's, this year is when we started adding that into the government classes.
Okay. And then how is that captured? Because if I remember correctly, last month, we had college career readiness at the last meeting, and this is really college career readiness, part two?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct? So it was just added this year, so other high schools, has it not fully rolled out at other high schools?
It's now going into the other, it started actually piloted at Freeman last year, and now it's rolled out to all the high schools through the government program.
Okay. So all high school students through the government class this year have the opportunity for that?
Yes, ma'am. And we're actually looking at moving forward, because it's trying to capture something similar at the ninth-grade level to make sure the students still have this opportunity at both the ninth and the 12th-grade level.
Okay. And do we have, I heard tracking, and do we have support? I heard tracking and the resources to do so. We have the tracking mechanism, and do we have the resources to properly execute the plan?
We are working on reallocating some of our resources to make sure that we have the needed human resources to follow up and help our teachers understand what it's involved as far as the tracking. And as I said earlier, there's, it's multiple definitions from the state. What's an internship? What's an externship? I believe, and I even get those confused. You would think an internship is less than an externship, but it's the reverse. So it's kind of interesting, the state definitions, but we're, part of it is teaching, helping our teachers and students understand the definitions, and then also providing the resources, connecting the classes to the business partners, because the teacher who is teaching, they need to know, okay, where do I go look for this? Major Clarity's been a huge help, because it's a resource, their students go out, I'm interested in being an airplane pilot. So all the resources under that career pathway are listed in Major Clarity, and the extra resources help in making sure those job opportunities are in Major Clarity for our students to have access to.
Is there any need with, is there, are there any opportunities for us as the board to hear, do you need resources with the budget season coming? What resources do we need? Or do we have them?
We are hoping to add additional support that can work directly with their schools. I've actually put that in as a request for our budget, so.
All right. Well, thank you so much. Thank you for this presentation. Dr. Cashwell?